Good morning.
The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to COVID-19 outbreak, and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the November 17, 2022 village board and committee of the whole meeting is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustee of the village board participating in the November 17, 2022 village board meetings, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussions and testimony during the meeting. Signed, Chowdhury M. Koker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, dated November 17, 2022. I would like to call this village board meeting of November 17, 2022 to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light? Is trustee Light with us?
Not on Zoom.
He's on Zoom, I believe. Can you hear us, David?
I can hear you. I'm here.
Thanks, Mike.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pleasure of allegiance. I would like to read the rules of decorum of the public. Number one, each speaker will be given five minutes to speak during the public comment period. Each speaker... Number two, each speaker will direct his or her comments to the members of the governing body and nor to any individual member or other individual present unless a question is directed to him or her by a member of the governing body. Number three, each speaker will refrain from personal attacks, foul, or abusive language, and will maintain a civil and courteous manner and tone. Number four, member of the audience will respect the rights of others and will not create noise or other disturbance that will disturb or disrupt the meeting. Individuals violating any rules of the decorum may be ruled out of order by the mayor, and individual violating the rules of decorum may be removed from the meeting at the direction of the mayor. We now move to the public discussion. I am opening the public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy assessment and collection of tax for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022, and adding April 30, 2023. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
This is only on the tax levy, not on...
None? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Any motion for that? Trustee Schmidt?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Trustee Pojak?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call word, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Is there a motion? Motion carried, no. Second, is there a motion to accept the annual tax levy assessment and collection taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022 and ending April 30, 2022?
Mayor, we just go to petitions and communications. That was just a public hearing. There'll be an ordinance later.
Okay.
So we can just go right to the petitions and communications. So we did that originally. Yeah, we had the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing. This, you see?
Yeah.
Community announcement. They should be over here. You mean to...
There you go.
Community announcements. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, December 3, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302. The village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents to only park on paved surfaces on and around your property. Per village code, please do not park on your lawn and grass areas. Parking long term on your lawn can damage your vehicle and your property. If you observe someone parking on an unpaved surface such as their lawn, please contact the community development department at (630) 260-6030, or call 911 to report this issue. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui?
With the arrival of fall season, the village of Glendale Heights, along with Glenside and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are at least 15 feet from any structure, including fences and picnic tables. For more information, please contact the Glenside Fire Protection District at (630) 668-5323, or the Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at (630) 894-9080. We would like to remind residents that per village code, do not rake or move leaves or yard waste into village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November 30, December 1, and December 2, depending on when your usual garbage and recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, please call Republic Service at (847) 981-0091.
Clerk Smith, please.
While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or who are currently serving our country during the holidays. The village is collecting holiday greeting cards as usual and will mail them in time for a holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to Village Hall by December 8. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, or add any personal contact information like email or social media. For more information, please call (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Maritato, please.
Thank you. The village of Glendale Heights invites the community to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, November 28. The event kicks off at 6:00 p.m. with holiday music, hot beverages, and cookies, and a craft hunt, and a holiday hayride. At 7:15, joint village board and Mr. and Mrs. Claus has flipped a magis torch to light up a portion of camera park. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060, or visit www.ghrec.org. The Glendale Heights Senior... The Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens is a senior health insurance program sponsor site and is offering open enrollment assistance for senior citizens through November through December 7. Volunteer counselors can provide you with the information you need to make an educated decision about your insurance. Please call the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 to schedule an appointment for assistance with your health insurance questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojak, please.
During the month of November, parking restrictions will be effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on a street sweeping program, please contact the Public Works Department at (630) 260-6040.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program helps give back to those families in need during the holiday season. We understand the importance of the holidays and the challenges that many families face each and every day, especially after the last two years due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Christmas sharing gives trees with wishes for items on mitten ornaments and will be available in the coming weeks at the Village Hall, the Center for Senior Citizens, and at the Sports Hub. If you are interested in making a monetary donation to support the Christmas Sharing Program and to give back to the community, please contact Debbie Moreno at (630) 260-6030 extension 6130. Now also, the Victorian Christmas makes its return as we showcase the history of the village of Glendale Heights. This is the historical house located at 311 Windy Point Drive on Monday, December 9, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and experience what a Victorian Christmas might have been like 100 years ago. Admission is free and refreshments will be served. Self-guided tours of the home will be offered, and children will have an opportunity to make a decoration to take home. For more information on the Victorian Christmas, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I have a proclamation to proclaim November 26, 2022 as Small Business Saturday. If there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation. Is there any?
No.
Go for it.
Okay, go ahead. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Before we go to the public, the clerks would like to say something. Clerk Smith?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is going to sound like a little bit of a history lesson, but the Freedom of Information Act was introduced by a California legislator named John Moss in 1955 after President Dwight Eisenhower fired thousands of federal employees who were thought to be communists. FOIA was eventually signed into law on Independence Day in 1966 by President Lyndon Johnson and went into effect in 1967. It was originally intended to cover federal records and expose corruption. While FOIA has been extended to state and local governments, it is intended to increase transparency, and it doesn't provide access to all government documents. There are a series of exemptions set forth by Congress that allow agencies to withhold information to protect security and personal privacy, among other matters. The reason people need to know the parameters of FOIA is because they have to understand that the employees and the administrators of the village are being inundated by frivolous FOIA requests. We are here to provide service to our residents, not to service their every curiosity, or to keep their personal records regarding home repairs, et cetera, for them. We are regularly asked for information of a personal nature and would like to know if you would like to have all of your information, including how much you paid for the latest remodel of your house, or maybe your driving record or your arrest record, released to your neighbors. In 1955, people from all walks of life were fired or blackballed, which meant they could not work, because back then, all you had to do was hint at someone being a communist to change or ruin their lives forever. For the person who filed a FOIA, to find out how many documents I have actually signed as clerk and collector, I can only tell you that I do not have that record, nor am I required to keep that kind of record. To that same person who wants us to run a criminal background check on another resident, we do not do that either. That is illegal. We are not here to pander to the gossip mongers who want the dirt on everything in the village. We all have real work to do for the residents of our village. If you have a question for any of us, stop trying to hide behind FOIA and ask us what you need to know. Your FOIA requests our public records. If you are that interested in obtaining information, you can go online and register with the Illinois Attorney General's Office as a member of the public and take the online FOIA course. If you have bona fide questions about something, please call your elected officials, and we will do our best to help you. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
Whoever wants to address can just form a line straight down the aisle. Any of the agenda items that are on the agenda?
Mr. Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. One thing that wasn't mentioned, I didn't ask during the public hearing on the, what is the proposed percentage increase in our tax levy per household? Do we have an answer on that?
May I address the answer, Mayor?
Yes.
The answer is 0%. The levy for 2022 is the same as the levy for 2021. There is no increase.
Okay, that's good to know. Just to let the general public know, 211 is now available and up and running for those that need assistance other than direct emergency assistance. So if there's anything that is needed, housing, food, anything, it's being handled by our... There's an Edison location that is actually handling that. Another question I had is, and it is, I have heard, I'm asking whether or not it's true or not that the old North Pancake House is being courted for a cannabis dispensary. That's what I've heard that is going... So that's, I heard recently that DuPage County Incorporated has initiated that ability to open one, and my understanding is that that location is being courted as one of those particular locations. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is John. As a resident of Glendale Heights, I am in favor of recreational marijuana use for the following reasons. Number one, physicians use medications... Sorry about that. I'm terrible at public speaking here. Sorry, let me try this again. As a resident of Glendale Heights, I am in favor of recreational marijuana for the following reasons. One, physicians use medications to help support and treat many different medical conditions like anxiety, depression, PTSD, and social... And so they're, sorry, and other medical conditions. Marijuana is a more natural... Marijuana is a more natural way to treat those conditions. I am supportive of a dispensary coming into Glendale Heights. I believe the tax dollars would benefit the community, and the dispensaries would benefit those who seek out more natural treatments than... Other towns around... Other surrounding towns around us already have dispensaries in use. Addison having two, St. Charles having one, Villa Park having one. It's around us, it's within us, it should be part of our community. I personally am in favor of having medical cannabis come to our town. I would also like to add that I also have several friends who, their voices are not heard in public, but they are with me today. I have looked at the polls on Facebook, and we had 83% to 18%, 83 being yes. I think that our voices are not being clearly heard. I know some of this board doesn't understand, but it's in our community, and it's helped me. It has personally helped me. I hope you guys will reevaluate this whole subject, and if you guys would like to talk to me, everybody knows who I am. I'd love to talk to you at another time, when it's better to hear my voice. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time and your considerations.
Mr. John, are you resident?
I am.
Okay. Done?
Thank you.
Next, please.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. How are you? My name is Sayad Sayad Hashim. I am resident of 225 Polo Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois 60139. First question to the board, that in the last meeting, we had already voted this thing that these stores are not going to open. So what exactly is the legal standing from the village perspective, that if a board for one, there was a tie, so the mayor comes into, and he voted against that stores, and for the second call, it was all unanimous? So what exactly the legal standing of village bylaws, that if something has been voted, can they bring it back again, and then vote it again, and then make it happen? So first, I need the answer for that. I think so the town, you should give me the answer.
Mr. Sayad, you can just make your comments, you know.
Okay, I cannot ask anything?
No, you can ask, but we will not respond.
Okay, you will not respond. Okay.
We won't.
So the second thing is the same, that I strongly against these stores, and we will do anything to stop them, whatever we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. No, please, no clapping, you know. Just, you know, let them talk, you know. Give them commands, no clapping. Please.
Yes, my name is Mario Zivkovik, and the first thing I wanted to speak about, I currently live in Glen Allen Countryside, which you all understand, is in the center of Glendale Heights. So to strictly, this is something that I wish can be looked over and reviewed and changed, because being in the center of Glendale Heights, okay, I'm not in Glendale Heights, and I don't have Glendale Heights zip code, but these stores affect me directly. Because why? The Aldi's that I shop at, is the closest Aldi's that I shop at, is one of the locations that were... That was being discussed. The North Ave location is literally three minutes from my home. Am I in Glendale Heights? No. But we are all neighbors. We're all neighbors in all the villages surrounding us. So we are all directed. So if anything, it should not be... It should be not looked at only Glendale Heights. It should be a radius, if anything. We should all be able to be heard on a matter that will affect my children, and that will affect the children of our community, that will affect the children of the surrounding areas that are three minutes, two minutes from, because the Glen Rise North Ave is on the border of Glen Allen and Glendale Heights. So if we're not going to be heard just because we're not in the zip code, is not fair to us, not fair to our children, not fair to our community. So this is something that I like to put in front of everybody, that if there's a way to change it, it should be changed. And secondly, comments are making, that was focused on, when it comes to 21 years and older will be only be allowed to purchase a cannabis. I was born and raised in this country. So they can purchase it, but they can pass it on to my children, they can pass it on to anybody else's children, or underage minors, and they can also sell it. They can obtain it from the stores, and they can also turn around and sell it. So this worrying about 21 and older and being carded doesn't really matter. It's just, this is something that is just putting an icing on the cake, and this is something that I don't think we should even look at. So these are things that I wanted to mention and understand, that we don't approve of this, we don't approve of this income, we don't approve of this, what will bring to Glendale Heights, and it will be crime. I don't care what this Texas will say, it will bring crime to our community, and it will bring our value of our property down. We don't want this store. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Lucas. I just want to start off by thanking you for letting me take the opportunity to speak to you tonight. All my friends and family, we're all very excited when we kind of heard the rumors about the dispensary possibly coming here to Glendale Heights, and, you know, such a respectable one, such as the one in talks. Currently, there's really no good options in order to get, you know, recreational or medicinal marijuana in the area. If you wanted to go and get recreational marijuana, you'd have to go outside city limits, pay an exorbitant amount of taxes, going to other communities to get it, which really does not benefit anybody here in this room. You're just outsourcing your money, going to other communities. Or option B, which is the illegal way of doing that, such as buying it off the street, which is extremely unsafe. I personally feel very strongly about this. I've had a close friend become hospitalized due to laced marijuana that he bought off the street, which I know is no excuse, because that's not the right thing to do. But I just feel as though nobody should have to take that risk when it comes to partaking in legal and recreational marijuana use. As far as, you know, the, you know, disagreement with it, you know, as far as saying that it's bad for the community, I would argue that it's no different than alcohol. There's hundreds of places here in Glendale Heights where you can purchase alcohol. You could also purchase alcohol for minors here as well, but it's still illegal, and I'm sure the police department here is on it, and will make sure that does not happen. You can't even go to a gas station or a grocery store without being faced with alcohol. So I'm here just basically to ask for, one, dispensary to come here to Glendale Heights. I feel like the opposition to it would be like the same people who would be against the lifting of prohibition nearly 100 years ago. Just think about how far the alcohol industry has come, the amount of money that could be made for the community, and the safety and security that would bring to this community. It's not a dirty industry, it's clean, there's always security outside of dispensaries. So um, and that, you know, once again, I want everybody to feel safe and secure. And uh, I also want my tax dollars to go to improve the community that I hold so dear. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Fahim Beg, I'm a resident of Glendale Heights and Club Drive. So in this discussion of cannabis usage, uh, just to point out a couple of quick points, there's no doubt that cannabis use has led to negative outcomes in society. The studies are, are out there. Um, that many people do so without encountering those effects themselves are anecdotal. Um, the self-evident points against those are the laws in place that required to deal with the aftermath of cannabis use. And we bring up alcohol, so in analogy to alcohol usage, we have to deal with things such as driving under the influence. Uh, and also the age restrictions point out another uh, issue that who our most vulnerable population are that could be dealing with the after effects of widespread cannabis use. Moreover, the fact that hundreds of thousands of dollars by these individual recreational cannabis dispensaries will be dedicated towards safety measures points out two issues. Um, me personally, I don't understand what benefit it would bring to a place other than the bank that needs that much security um, in order to avoid the potential harms of business on that site. Um, if that much security is needed, there's something wrong that needs to be assessed there. The burden of the cost of that security seems to be significantly offsetting any potential revenues that would be uh, garnered and therefore uh, benefiting the city, the city in terms of potential tax revenues. So while the volume of overall revenue is being considered, people are not considering the net profit that would actually made in the end. If the major concern is towards tax revenue, the city needs to work towards more productive means of generating business opportunities that are both beneficial to the economy and beneficial to society in general. These stores, as a reminder as well, were one hundred percent dedicated towards recreational usage. So any arguments about medical usage are null. The potential owners could not bring up any clear plans to support medical uh, cannabis uh, um, provisions on their site other than mentioning that the substances are about uh, the same as what they would obtain from a pharmacy. And Illinois has had medical usage laws for many more years than they have had for recreational usage and the pharmaceutical channels to obtain that. So if that's the concern, that's already there. If the concern is buying contraband cannabis, I would say no one goes out of their way to purchase contraband alcohol and the idea is that, well, it's available nearby. But even if it's not available nearby, I haven't heard of anybody, um, you know, really going out of the way, way to make um, unsafe moonshine. I think the number of incidences of homemade brews and uh, problems associated with that have led to people to understand that's not a safe uh, method of obtaining their uh, you know, substances. And if they are going to go out of their way to obtain contraband cannabis, that points to a different issue that needs to be dealt with in terms of education on personal life choices and more wise use of one's time as well as what they put in their bodies, such as wholesome food. Um, and uh, ensuring that they maintain long-term health uh, over their bodies. In summary, the uh, facilities and laws are there for those who have the concern and need um, of obtaining cannabis for medical usage. Um, opening a recreational uh, dispensary does not seem to provide any net benefit to society. And the potential tax benefit uh, does not seem to be fully explored. Um, and again, if we're talking about uh, increasing the tax revenue in the city, we should really be looking at more productive means, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, uh, my name is Azar Mohammed, uh, I reside at two seventeen North Brandon Drive, Glendale Heights. I repeat Glendale Heights. The reason I, I highlight that part is because I keep hearing time again that the residents when, who were opposing this were not from Glendale Heights, so I just want to make sure that you guys note that down. Uh, standing here third time straight and uh, I have the same thing, I just want to keep it on the record that I'm against both the locations. And uh, I would have the same question, but I don't think you guys will answer it. Uh, what makes uh, something which is already voted uh, brought back again? Uh, is it something the board does not like the result of it or what kind of legal procedure it is? So do we assume that what you vote tonight will be again brought back again until you like the result? Uh, that doesn't make any sense. And also I would like to address uh, the part where somebody mentioned on the Facebook, uh, on the same Facebook group, if you notice, uh, there are all uh, three suburbs, people belonging to the three suburbs. And uh, the point of democracy is uh, who shows up on the ballot and vote? People couldn't complain that they don't show up on the ballot and then later on, their voice is not heard. If they want to be heard, they have to come up here and make their voices heard, that's all, thank you very much.
Thanks, next, please.
Good evening, uh, Mike Somerville. Um, first of all, I'll put my title, President Queen Bee, uh, District Sixteen School. Um, first of all, I make request for item number six, you consider removing since our board did not uh, have consent to, consent to uh, go along with the study, so. Second of all, you all know me, I've been up here many times talking about marijuana. It's stronger than it was in my time, it's not, at least ninety-five percent. Uh, I sat through, excuse me, sat through the uh, presentations and I heard basically, they didn't want it, when you asked them, the board asked about, is it medical? They were more recreational. So they were pushing that they're, they're for recreational, okay? And I, I've got studies, I could show you all, um, I'm worried about the kids. Um, because we have had cases where parents have left their gummy bears or water and they brought to school and they have overdosed and got sick, they had to be transported. So I mean, you can go anywhere else, but uh, Glendale Heights, again, be a long time resident, sixty years. I don't want to go to sin taxes. We, we seem to go towards sin taxes, alcohol, tobacco, uh, poker, gambling, other things, why do we need to do that? So I, I give you, uh, my five minutes will probably be up, but uh, one thing I need, consent agenda on that, item number six. Um, and I could stand up here all day and talk about marijuana, I mean retired police officer, retired uh, dare officer. So I have that feeling and I still have the feeling that sixty-six years old about marijuana, thank you.
Next, please. No, please, no clapping.
Hi, my name is Michelle Small, I'm a thirty-two year resident of Glendale Heights. I've raised three daughters in this town. And I was brought into this through the Facebook post and it really amazes me how many closed-minded people there are in this village. When I go to a liquor store to buy something, I don't crack open a can in the parking lot and drink it and drive through town like that. What makes anyone think someone who goes to a dispensary is gonna whip out a joint and start smoking it? I, I watched the last board meeting, I get why people don't want a dispensary at that North Avenue location, I see there's traffic problems here. But why rule out both locations? What's wrong with the one by Dunkin' Donuts? I, I, I don't get why everyone's so closed-minded to this. I'm a single mom and any proper, property tax relief I can get, I'm all for it. And I just wish you people that are in support of it would speak up because you're all on Facebook, just show up at a meeting and speak your mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue, um, a couple of things from the agenda. The feasibility study, whoever came up with that, that's fantastic. I, I hope the schools are open-minded and receptive to looking into that because all these different school districts we have is just confusing and I think it makes a lot of sense to consolidate. My question is about, um, I'm sorry, new business, number two, an ordinance to amend the liquor license for the convenience store. Why would we amend the liquor license for the convenience store? That's been there for, I've been here thirty years, they've been here thirty years. Is it changing ownership or are you changing the, the types of liquor they can sell? Because we've had these discussions many times in the past about bringing in the hard liquor and no one in the neighborhood wanted it. And if that's what it is, I'd like to know, that's what I'd like to know if that's what the change of license is for.
It is to upgrade their license to allow for spirits to be sold in the uh, convenience store.
Well, how did that come to be when it's been, the whole time we've lived there, no one has wanted that in those liquor stores? We have liquor stores for that, not convenience stores in the middle of our neighborhood.
The owner of the establishment asked to increase his license.
But they've been denied for the last twenty years, why now? Why are we, so we're saying cannabis, bad, bad, bad. But we're allowing the stores to sell more liquor. You go in there, they sell all the dope paraphernalia, all the papers, everything but the dope. But we're denying the dope, but we're expanding the use of alcohol, we're saying that's okay.
Well, that's for the board to decide tonight.
Well, that's what I'm asking them, they're right there, no one's answering me. All right, one other question, since you're obviously not going to answer that question, but it, it, it has been asked and asked at many board meetings. When it was open to the public, they did not want in our neighborhoods, they didn't want hard liquor in the local, in our grocery stores and our neighborhood convenience stores. And now you're adding them, but you're denying the cannabis, it, it seems kind of, I can't think of a good word other than hypocritical, but I don't think that's the right word. But uh, it doesn't make sense to me that you're gonna expand one and deny the other. My other question is, Mr. Mayor, what, everybody's been here giving their personal opinions, you put a, you put a uh, survey on Facebook for the yeas and nays for the cannabis, what, what was the outcome of it? For, you know, for or against? From the, from, from the Facebook residents?
Mr. Pope, I love you, but I don't want to comment to you. No answer.
But it was public, it was on Facebook.
I know. And uh, I was successful in my objective, you know.
So you got good information from it, you don't want to share it?
Yes.
All right, I, all right, that was all I wanted to know, I wanted to know why you were expanding that license when no one is, it hasn't been talked about before and now it's in front of you and uh, we do not want it in the neighborhoods, we have liquor stores for that, thank you.
Thank you for coming, next, please.
Good evening, my name is Jim Sullivan. I live on Larry Lane in Glendale Heights, been a resident out here since nineteen sixty-eight, along with my wife's family also. There's a lot of passion about the cannabis discussion on both sides. And it's all warranted. But we're not here because Glendale Heights wants to be its own little entity creating this to make a, a statement to the state. The state has decided that this is a viable source of revenue and changed the classification of it to allow people to use it, you know, as a recreational and medical alternative. We've gone through some trying times with COVID. Everybody's had to cut back, the village has been doing less or doing more with less people and resources. Uh, we've lost businesses, tax revenue. This source of revenue that these companies are wanting to hand you right now could help supplement what we've lost and put us in a better place. Um, it's, the, the numbers that I'm hearing, it, it's really hard to walk away from. And sitting up there, knowing the financial state that everybody's been through without getting the COVID handout from the government, um, I, I don't know how you can pass it up. We pay some of the highest property taxes in the county. As, you know, without getting another shot in the arm, you're gonna be coming to us sooner or later, looking for another handout on taxes. I don't want to pay it, I'd like, if you come to me, I'd like it to be less. And maybe this source of revenue can help keep it down. Along with finding other sources of revenue to build on this. You could take the, the money that's generated from this business in a year could be something that replaces that section of failing water main or sewer. Uh, that section of road that's failed, that isn't in the budget or in the program for the year. Can, the money can be drawn from that and put towards that project. The, this business has a lot to offer, the village as a whole. And, and I'd like to see you all reconsider that. Unless you can tell me where you can get that kind of money someplace else right now. Please reconsider it.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Next, please.
Good evening, first, my name is Farid Masood, I'm from ten forty-one Greenbrier Drive, Glendale Heights. I came here to oppose the cannabis uh, location at, for both the locations. And uh, few points that I want to highlight here is, one of my respected residents said, if you are allowing liquor to be available openly, then why not cannabis? So my question to him is, if you're allowing liquor to be openly offered in a party, do you want the cannabis also to be offered in a party and everybody, young and old, sit together in front of everybody and start taking cannabis? Second, one of my other respected residents said, think about the revenue. The revenue is coming, yes, I agree, but we should be cause of concern, not as a cause of opportunity that you are getting so much money and the village is earning. Village should be concerned that so much revenue is coming, that means so much, so many people are consuming cannabis. Is it good? No, it is not. So it does to statements, I firmly opposed resolution, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Ranello, I've been a property owner for forty-four years in Glendale Heights. I've seen this prop, this village get turned around big time in the past twenty-five years. We do, we're, there's, I believe, five different uh, rates in property taxes in Glendale Heights. Unfortunately, I live in the highest rate. And I didn't, I had to wait until I was sixty-five to get a freeze on my property tax. Everybody's struggling today. What took, is taking Glendale Heights so long to get cannabis here? We're all going to benefit it financially. And if anyone thinks like someone did say earlier, they're not going to light up a joint right in their car. And when there's a will, there's a way. I know people, I've smoked pack in the sixties. People could control themselves better with pack than with liquor. So I do believe we should get, we should get it, we should benefit by it. Our property taxes may go down instead of keep on going up. And it's, I'm not only talking for myself, I'm talking for people that are younger than me that, how do you get the money? You know, people shouldn't have to be pulling their hair out at sixty years old, struggling because of the cost of living and everything else. You know, our garbage, what we pay for garbage is ridiculous. All this revenue that we're gonna get from the uh, income could go a little bit towards garbage, property taxes, fixing streets, whatever has to be fixed, where it won't come out of anybody's pocket. To me, that's a no-brainer, it's a win-win situation for everybody in Glendale Heights. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am for it.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Rabiel Kesser, I live in Greenbrier Drive, Glendale Heights. Um, I'm here to oppose strongly from allowing the village to open up the two dispensaries on both the locations, not just one. Um, I agree with everybody else who said that if, had it been just for the medicinal use, we might have a different discussion. But this is recreational use. So it, there is no um, need for such dispensaries to be in our town. Um, also, the point that the, uh, the proponents are trying to make that, you know, the property taxes will not go up if we have these two dispensaries. Where does it say that? Where is the guarantee that if we allow these two dispensaries to open up, property taxes will not go up for the longevity of Glendale Heights? Um, the dispensaries will stay there. If we do not have property tax increase this year, next year, it will eventually go up sometime. So the dispense, we will have higher property taxes as well as two dispensaries in our town. So I hope that, you know, you keep that in consideration. And another thing is that the argument that they are trying to make, they're trying to come at it from both ends. On one side, they say, um, On one side, they say, like, you know, there's no negative impact because people already have access to marijuana, and people can buy it from the boundary, off the boundaries of our town. And on the other hand, they are trying to say, oh, no, we definitely need these dispensaries. So what is it? If you already have access to it in nearby towns, why do we need to have these dispensaries in our town? So it makes absolutely no sense, and I believe that, just like last time, that you guys voted to turn down these two dispensaries from opening up, I hope that you guys do it again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Next, please.
Hello, this is, this is Mohammed Mortuja. I live in seventeen ninety-two Arlington Land, Glendale Heights. So I, the reason I came back here, the, the two store actually open up, opening up, I thought that that's the last time we voted, it is end, but it's looked like, again, we're actually coming back to the same, 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 same business. So the one of the, of course, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, do not like to see those two, two store open up. The, also, the, the, as I grew up, you know, from the childhood, I heard it, that those, those are the drug, you know, those are the drug, and, and, and it's not good for, it's good, it's not good for children, good not for the adult even. And, and, and I know that even in America, millions of people already went for jail for this. Now suddenly becoming illegal, you know, and Glendale Heights actually rushing to, you know, try to get out the money, you know. Money is, you know, yes, there is, of course, money needed, but not, Glendale Heights could survive last, last hundred years without this money, and it's still gonna be, if we don't open up, it's still gonna be, survive the, Glendale Heights. So, I'm, I'm just requesting to, to take a look the, the future of the children, if we get a store open up, yes, it is, all of that looks good, money and everything, but then later on, the, all of the children are gonna get affected. Eventually, Glendale Heights have to pay back for the, their, their, their treatment and, and hospital bill. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Kesar Chishdi. I'm from Greenbrier Division, Glendale Heights. So, one question I have is, we, like all the community members, when the discussion was up for these two dispensaries, they came up and they gave their comments, so what is the procedure in general in the village that, when a decision is made, can anybody come in and just tell to redo the voting or redo the decision? Like today, you say the alcohol thing is, the license is given, and tomorrow, somebody, like ten people show up and say, can you reverse the decision? Like, if you guys can explain that, why, when you make a decision, how and when can that be revised? And so that we know in the future that certain decisions, when they're made, when can we change that? Secondly...
Well, let me answer, the mayor asked that I address your question. The, the board has never voted on cannabis dispensaries. The last meeting that everybody came to was the committee, the whole. They give a recommendation. So they voted on what their recommendation would be. This board has never voted on the issue.
Okay.
All right? They may be the same people, but it was, one was a committee, this is the village board.
Okay, so that was a committee. Now, today is the final vote, or?
Well, there will be no vote today either. Today is up for first reading only. So they read what the ordinance would be, and next meeting where a vote would be taken.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we are just getting public view to have more opinion.
You have the right to comment on anything that's on the, on the agenda.
All right, thank you for explaining that. So, just to reiterate then, I think if we truly need to get the feedback of the community, then I think the best thing is to put the question on the voting ballot, because otherwise, in a certain meeting, one group will come, and the other meeting, the other one will come, and then this kind of test will happen. But if, 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 if a decision has to be made within the, your regular meetings, that's fine, but I think asking a question on Facebook is not relevant, because there are three communities there, and then you don't, you don't track that who is giving you the answer from the Glendale Heights community. So that's, first of all, if you do a market research, that's not a valid question, or not a valid statistic. Secondly, I think the best way is to do is, valid is, a valid question, my recommendation will be to put a question, first of all, do you want any cannabis store? Okay, do you want any recreational, or do you want any medicinal? So my, as a personal view, I would definitely recommend or support a medicinal cannabis store in the town, but I may have a difference of opinion for recreational one. So I think we should ask in the appropriate groups, platforms of the opinion, because otherwise, the whole universe, we don't know who is on the Facebook. I mean, they are from the three towns, but we don't know if they are from Glendale Heights or not. So that's my recommendation, and I will strongly recommend that, at least for now, let's not open the cannabis stores in those locations until we get a public vote or opinion from the ballot in next April. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please. Please stop, you know, clapping, is my request, you know. Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sayed Razza, and I live on two two five Polo Club Drive. You probably figured, but I oppose the recreational use for cannabis, and I know we've had multiple meetings like these, so pretty much all the points have been considered, and I'm sure you guys have already thought very deeply about this, because, I mean, just seeing how many people are coming out for something like this, it's not a trivial decision to make. And my two cents, the only thing I wanted to add is to, that we should definitely consider the precedent that we're setting over here. With this, if this is said, if it's said yes, that yes, we can have these dispensaries, then this is a precedent that's being set for other things that may come later on. Now, I'm not saying, I mean, it definitely is, there's a possibility of a slippery slope going on here, right? If there's a precedent, then we can say later on, oh, you guys said yes to this, what's wrong with this new thing? The country has changed in the past twenty years, ten, twenty years, for better, but also, there's a lot of change that's happened very quickly. And generally speaking, a lot of things may seem good short-term, we may be getting the money, we may be getting safer usage, all of that, but we have to consider the precedent and the long-term effects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shahrouq. Next, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shazan. I also reside in Polo Club Drive in Glendale Heights. I've been someone that's lived a good portion of my life here in Glendale Heights now. I graduated high school from here, and I also got my computer science degree from here, and now I have been employed for two years now. And as someone that wants to one day start a family here, I would greatly oppose the idea of opening these stores, because I don't believe a location that has these stores has a good view on the general community. I don't think it is something that I would want my kids to be growing up around, it's not something that I want, that, it may in the, in the short term bring about some, some form of good and something that may help us, but again, long-term wise, I think there's a huge effect in even just real estate and stuff like that. A lot of people mention they're property owners, and it may help them in taxes, but in long-term, having these cannabis stores, what type of customers and people that do they attract, and what do you want those type of people growing up and around your children and whatnot? I think this is something we should consider, the long-term effects, and not just be so blinded by the short-term gratification and the uses that this may lead to. I strongly disapprove of these openings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Yasin Solomon. I live in the Greenbrier subdivision, right behind Menards, and I highly oppose this measure. I've been a seven-year resident in the community, and, you know, I wouldn't even like alcohol. I agree, I wouldn't even like an alcohol store in the neighborhood, but unfortunately, this is what we have today. I was not a resident of the Glendale Heights neighborhood when alcohol was allowed in the area, and if that had come by, come by at the time, if I was there, I would have disallowed it as well. Why? Because I don't want my daughter and my kids to be driving in an area on streets where there's alcoholics and people who are under any sort. They're not able to pay attention to the road, and they're not able to drive properly. I have a fifteen-year-old who's just learning how to drive right now, and that would be something that would be very tragic for me personally. Thank you for asking the revoting issue. And the other thing is, I have seen somebody mentioned, hey, people don't drink in the streets. I've actually seen people drink in the streets where I used to live, okay? People have covered the bottles with paper, just so they cannot show that they're drinking, but they'll drink in the streets because, you know, they're allowed to. So I can imagine people would not smoke, people would not do cannabis in the streets as well. This, right now, we consider a very safe neighborhood, in my opinion, and I would hate to have changed that. And the monetary issue, you know, one life is more valuable than five hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna make per year on any of these dispensaries. One life is more important than anything that we can make out of these dispensaries, let alone five hundred thousand dollars. So that is not something that we should consider, given that our society values should be more important to us than the amount of money that we can make. And a correction on the prohibition of alcohol, when alcohol was prohibited was because there were a lot of underground activity that were supplying alcohol to the areas, right? And so the government could not control it, and that is why alcohol was brought back, right? And this is not the same issue as alcohol was. All right, so there needs to be correction on history there, because there was lack of control, and we do not have lack of control in this area at the moment. Thank you.
All right, before we continue on with public comment, I need to make one thing clear. It's not up for debate whether Glendale Heights allows cannabis or not. Cannabis is allowed in the village of Glendale Heights. So your comments would be directed to whether a conditional use should be granted to the two petitioners at the two different locations, whether they, they meet the criteria or don't meet the criteria. You have the right to make your comments, but please understand, Glendale Heights allows cannabis. It's just whether they should be at these two different locations for these two different petitioners. So you could, you could proceed.
My name is Sue Carum. I live in unincorporated Glen Allen. And just to let you know, the last time I was at this meeting, you know, you talked about voting it down or whatever, most of the residents that walked out early, they were from Glendale Heights, okay? And let me just say that I think this, for the children of our area, I know you, you talk about, oh, it's butted up against the neighborhood and everything else, the kids in the area are gonna be exposed to it. I understand that. But we don't need it in the neighborhood, we don't need it in Glendale Heights, and just another thing, what the gentleman said about the DARE program, Glendale Heights kids come to Glen Allen for schools, they're in the programs for DARE and to be against drugs. And what is this showing them in our area, whether it be Glen Allen, Glendale Heights? Glen Allen doesn't have dispensaries, Wheaton doesn't have dispensaries, why would Glendale Heights? Is it the almighty buck? This is ridiculous. People don't need this, it's because of the money? Forget the money. I'd rather, now, you're gonna say, because I don't live in Glendale Heights. I'll gladly give money to Glendale Heights if they don't put this dispensary in. They don't need it. You don't need it. It's horrible for the kids. It's gonna cause worse problems down the road. These kids are gonna be with, they're gonna be drugged up, ambulance is gonna be there, fire departments are gonna be there, and you think it's gonna, you know, you're gonna get the revenue now? Wait till other, other things happen. And down the road, when these kids are being, they're being treated like this, in, in this way, with drugs and everything else, we don't need it. These kids are our most important thing that we have in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I, I try to subtly, subtly kind of notify everybody that we're not gonna talk about whether cannabis is good or not. So if you're gonna step up and talk about whether you agree with cannabis or not agree with cannabis, you're going to be cut off. You are going to only comment on the conditional uses that are before it. So if you agree that it's a good location, a bad location, any criteria, if they don't meet the criteria to be in that location, your comments are welcome. But if we're gonna hear about whether cannabis is good or not, that's going to be cut off. We've been talking for a while, and it seems like, as the line gets shorter, more people step up after it's done. So the, that, it is not an agenda item, whether cannabis is good or not, it's whether these conditional uses should be approved or not. So please make your comments, but I will cut you off if we're talking about debating whether cannabis is good or not.
Hi there, Trevor Cooner, Glendale Heights resident for thirty years, DARE graduate. I think both of these locations are fine. I don't see any issues with the location itself. I think they're totally reasonable, with very easy access, that are fairly removed from most child-oriented regions. They are focused more towards shopping areas beyond that. It, it's safer for the community. If you're going through and controlling substances like this, then you're going to go through and have a safer overall society and area. If you go through and look at prohibition that was mentioned earlier, it got very dangerous when it was gone through and prohibited. Going through and removing access to things that can be obtained safely leads to criminal use and criminal sale.
Sir, not to interrupt you, but you're getting off of, off topic.
Apologies, apologies. So I, I think that these are reasonable locations as they are fairly removed from most child-oriented areas, as well as they are solid locations for access and would be beneficial for residents that choose to partake in these activities.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarim Khan. I'm an unincorporated Glen Allen resident, once again, behind the Holy Vana, I believe. I want to speak about just the Holy Vana location here. I don't think it's a good location at all, and even after the solution that they brought up last time, I still do not believe that that will work. First of all, the grading just between the Chinese restaurant and the current, I believe, FMI, the other building, it's almost five feet difference. I don't know how they're really going to tackle that, but besides that, I believe that if they're going to do exits onto North Avenue from the Chinese restaurant, it's going to be, the first lane from that Chinese restaurant is the right turn lane, and when you're gonna see that North Avenue is packed, you're almost definitely gonna choose to go into the empty right turn lane, and then we're back into that same issue that we were going through before of people coming into our community. So I just wanted to say that it's still not a good location, and I understand that it was pretty much a unanimous vote against last time, and I'm hoping that you guys will choose to vote the same way next week, or next, next meeting. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Sayed. I live on Stevenson Drive, like, present a mile from here. I moved from Austin, Texas, like, three years ago. I've been loving the city, living here in Glendale Heights. One of the things which I, a lot of people ask you, like, since it's already voted against, and why did it come back? But that's again my question as well. And then when you see the people coming out in this cold winter to actually just speak against it, I mean, that's just a concern of the Glendale Heights residents as well, right? I mean, it's not like people coming from outside. That's one thing. Then, other thing is, the locations, as you said, I will just, it's interesting, I live near the location between Bloomingdale and Army Trail, that's residential neighborhood right there. We have Glassstone Apartments right behind the location, and then my kids go to the school right on North Avenue, where the other location is there. So both of these locations are in the residential neighborhood, if you are just talking about. And then the Prossen Council Cannabis, we all know about it, we talked about in previous meetings, so it's just like what precedent we are setting by allowing these stores in this beautiful city of Glendale Heights, that's, you know, that's my feedback. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, please.
Hey, my name is Vati Khan, resident of one N five four zero River Drive, Glen Allen. I'm not the owner of Glen, Glendale Heights, but I'm a taxpayer of Glendale Heights because I shop in the businesses with, located in the Glendale Heights. So I have a right to say in that, whatever... So I have a right to say whatever need to be said. I'm the vice president of Glen Valley Civic Home and Home Association. We did a survey in the existing location in the Edison, which is kind of isolated location, which not so much traffic. But after this cannabis dispensary put on EarthMed and Edison, the increase of traffic, increase of the walking traffic, the local businesses around that dispensary are very afraid of accidents, of the burglaries, of the thefts. So are we expecting the same in both locations? The traffic condition on both and North Avenue and as well as on the Army Trail is worst, which was described by their attorneys as well last time, that this is, these are the worst intersections. But still, if you put more of these cannabis dispensaries, it will increase the traffic. And yes, police will get more calls. It's a job security for them. They will get more jobs. Other than that, I don't see a benefit of it. Second, Illinois article seven zero five seven B one says there should not be any dispensary put in within the thousand feet of a school. And there's a Blackhawk School right next to the Army Trail location, which is less than around eight hundred feet. So please, that need to be considered. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, please.
Marcia Reese, forty-five-year resident, retired educator. Mike Somerville was my DARE officer in fifth grade for eight years. And Chief Pappas, I think that you were the DARE officer at Blackhawk School, which is right in my neighborhood. I am totally against having a dispensary that close to a school and an apartment building. The children, when school isn't in session, are up on the equipment, they're in the playground. And I also thought that there was a limit as to how many feet you could have a dispensary from a school or a church. I know in New York State there is. And also, the traffic study, I do not agree with. That plaza, it's hard to get in and out of. If I wanna pull out of my cul-de-sac onto Army Trail Road and go to Jewel, people from that plaza think they have the right of way. When they don't, I'm on Army Trail Road and they pull right in front of me. I was at Aldi on Saturday. I could not pull, and this was at ten o'clock. I could not pull out of my parking spot because of the traffic with Dunkin' Donut. They're coming in from this way, they're coming in from this way to line up for the drive-through. This is a horrible location. Being at my residence for forty-five years and noting the traffic on Army Trail and Bloomingdale, it's awful. And I think you've picked a horrible location for the one on Bloomingdale Road. I was just made aware of all of this tonight as we've been out of town for about five months. And I'm not familiar with the North Avenue location. But I felt I had to speak tonight instead of coming to your coffee. I'm just, I'm just totally against this. I think it's very dangerous for pedestrians and for the children in my area. It's a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
Hi all, my name is John Desilo. I actually am, I'm the developer for the dispensary off of Bloomingdale Road. I have built over sixteen of these. It has been nothing but positive. The traffic is not going to impede anybody. The Dunkin' Donuts there is, is just, is a money revenue. Pump them out all day long. It's not gonna, it's not going to affect anybody. The Delta Eight, which is sold in town, is not regulated at all. This is a state-mandated dispensary that is, kids cannot get in here. I build these. They have three doors to go through. ID's checked. They're not trying to hide anything. This is state-mandated. And everything is checked. We make sure security is good on all accounts. We actually don't. We make sure it's all good for them. However, the IDFPR makes sure that the people cannot get in. They have the regulatory standards. And the tax dollars, and it's not going to affect the traffic. And I just wanted to speak my piece and say that we are here and we're willing to do this. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, please.
Hadeem Khan, unincorporated resident. I just wanted to say, like, last week when we were here, or two weeks ago, one of the trustees actually said that the area behind the Holy Vanna location on North Avenue has very little police activity. And since this is actually not the Glendale Heights area, you guys can't have your cops just roaming through doing patrolling if I'm not mistaken. And I don't believe DuPage has the facilities to constantly have police presence in that neighborhood ensuring that nothing goes wrong. And along with that, last time, the police actually said that, the police chief actually said that traffic is terrible in that intersection. If we go one intersection over, you can see there's the mosque. And they actually had to create an entirely new entrance because taking that U-turn is terrible. There's so many terrible accidents. And even to this date, there's people going into those apartments. And you can see, like, at least, like, every few months, you'll see at least one terrible accident there. And I don't think we should have these many cars taking that U-turn. Right now, what, there's at least four or five cars per hour. We're easily increase that to like ten cars per hour taking that U-turn, increasing the risk and making it harder for people to enter that community. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, please.
Yusuf Naim, former resident. I'd just like to say that though I understand that we're not supposed to be talking, we're not talking on the morality of cannabis, I think it is worthy of being, like, recognized that it does incorporate an altered state of mind.
All right, but if you're gonna go down that path, then your comments are over. Sorry, what was your name?
Yusuf Naim. And besides that, that's besides the point. I'd like to just recognize the fact that due to, according to the traffic study that was presented last meeting, Army Trail Road and Bloomingdale Road are among the most used roads in DuPage County. And the traffic there is, of course, terrible. Often accidents are very often occurring. So adding to that traffic will only increase that chance. And it's just not a good location due to the amount of traffic, the amount of danger in that area and constant traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Essen Salik, and I live in an incorporated area in Glen Allen. I live about less than two hundred feet away from the North Avenue store. I actually sent a petition to all you respected trustees and the mayor more than a month ago, where about more than two hundred and fifty plus people have signed a petition. Out of it, seventy percent of them were from Glendale Heights, who are actually saying no to this recreational cannabis store.
Sir, I'm gonna stop your comments there. We're not talking about whether cannabis is appropriate for Glendale Heights. We're talking about whether the dispensaries that have petitioned.
I would not actually call them dispensaries with all due respect.
But that's what the, that's what the law calls them.
It might be actually calling it. If you actually look at the term of what dispensary is, it's a medical room where, where the drugs are, where actually the medicine is actually prepared. It is recreational store, which is directly affecting the youth of our community. It's not just one community. It's the community around Glendale Heights.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to focus your attention to the conditional use petitions.
I'm actually focusing on the topic with all due respect, sir. I just wanted to bring to you our attention that Glenbard West Principal has actually said this is not good for the Glenbard School. All the Glenbard, all the Glendale Heights youth and children are going to go to that school. What, what actually message are you giving the Glen Allen students and all the youth over there?
Sir, your time is up.
It's not up. I haven't actually finished, finished five minutes yet.
You are not talking about an agenda item. You're talking about your feelings.
I'm actually talking the facts here. If you are, if you want me to actually shut up, you have to look and respond back to my email, my petition that seventy percent of the Glendale Heights residents have actually signed.
So this is for public comment.
I have a drug enforcement data research, which was done by Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration, which was, which was actually posted on twenty eighteen, which says, which says twelve age, twelve to seventeen, one point eight million kids are actually using cannabis. This was in twenty eighteen. That number is going up. On what cost do you want to bring that money into Glendale Heights Town?
Dispensaries are allowed in Glendale Heights.
It is not a dispensary.
It's not up, it's not up for discussion tonight.
It is a recreational retail store. It is a recreational retail store with all due respect. And I also wanted to bring this to your attention. It actually brings a lot of issues, not just about whether or not the kids are going to get addicted to that. It's about schools, their grades, the property taxes, the property values, the accidents that the people actually get, will get into. Do you, the chief, I would actually, I would like to ask you a question. Do you have any system that actually tests whether or not the guy is actually using cannabis? Or you are just using the DUI test?
Mr. Hassan, you cannot ask questions, you know. Just give your comments.
I'm actually giving my comments, but you guys are not answering anything.
Okay, can you leave?
Have you, have you guys, have you guys actually responded back to my email?
Listen, can you leave or not?
I'm going to leave.
Please leave.
I am going to leave.
Next, please.
You already have an agenda. You brought this up only because you want to approve those stores.
Uh, chief, remove him. He's okay now.
Abdul Sayed, living on nineteen fifty-four Baroque Glen Glen Lights and actually very close to the convenience store. I just want to talk with the perspective of topic, from the safety perspective. It's very personal to me, people saying like DUIs and addiction, what it does. Ten years back, and might be also like chief can give you that, because I see the pub and that every, next week especially in the summertime, I see that cops shows up there. And I see their, you know, disturbance to the Brandon, not Brandon Road, how it affects. And top of that, this is my picture I can provide, where like ten years to twelve years back, my kids were sitting in the sitting, sitting area of my house in the sofa. Just five minutes before, somebody drunk guy came in and hit that. It was like very fortunate for me to have my, still my, those two kids still alive. And I can show you the pictures I have, like, you know, still from that accident. And somebody drunken guy just come out from that, you know, Brandon Avenue, seven eleven, and hit my house in another accident. So I just want to say that people saying the safety, from the safety perspective, I see that, because I live very close to that Bloomingdale and Army Trail store. So already have that concern, there is disturbance, and I see the safety. And seeing this, and one more thing is opening, which is can brought something like from the safety concern. Yes, I just want to brought to you guys' attention.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Zabat Khan. I am a resident in an incorporated area of Glen Allen. I just want to reiterate the traffic issues on both locations. It's been said multiple times, the Army Trail and Bloomingdale location as well as the North Avenue location. But I wanna focus in on, I believe some people said that these, both of these spots are in retail-oriented locations. But Holy Vanna is not. A sandwich between an abandoned Chinese restaurant and a tire shop, neither of which are getting daily visitors that, that come every single day. As well, there's two huge neighborhoods on both sides of North Avenue there, where there's a thousand homes on both sides. So I don't think it's really retail-oriented. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yes.
Do you think that maybe we can cut this a little short? Because we have a whole agenda that we didn't even get to, and it's nine o'clock. I mean, I think we know where they stand. We have to let the public finish their comments.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Sadiq Mohammed, and I live on three oh one North Brandon Drive, near to that Bloomingdale and Army Trail crossing. So during summertime, I go with my kids to Aldi Dunkin' Donuts riding bike. So with this store coming nearby, I feel afraid for my kids. And I don't think, again, I can go with my kids riding or doing something like that. So I don't want that store nearby my home. That's all I need to say.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, next, please.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Sharif. I reside in two one five Ahmath Court, Glendale Heights. And I vote for the local election as well. My one question is that last few meetings we were here, I want an answer from the board or especially from the mayor. What was the reason we are reconvening? Last time, you guys overwhelmingly voted no, then why we are doing this?
Sir, if you listened before I answered that question, the committee, the whole was just a recommendation. This board has not voted on the issue yet. They were given a recommendation by the committee, the whole. And there are, they are the same people, but they act in different capacities. So this hasn't been voted on. It's just the recommendation has been forwarded to this board. So there won't be a vote tonight. It'll be in two weeks at the next meeting. There'll be a vote taken on the issue.
Okay.
All right, so I, just in case you missed my explanation.
Okay, so I'm really confused. So you guys holding two positions? Let me explain. I will talk with you later, you know. So you are, you are resident and your vote is no, you know. I, I will talk with you later, if you want. Okay.
They act as two different entities.
Yeah, because we are, we don't have that much time, so next, please. No, no, let, let me complete. If, if you have given some time, I'm asking you the legitimate questions. Okay, so what I'm saying, let me reiterate my view. No, no, I know your question, you know, as attorney mentioned, you know, we were acting as a. Mayor, can you give my time? Okay, go ahead. Let me talk. Okay. Because since you guys are saying last meeting was a different one, and now this one is different. So I live in Glendale Heights. I vote in all elections. I'm very active in here, and I am an investor here. I have few properties here. So I am living here for last fifteen years in Glendale Heights. And I live in Ahmath Court. I know. If the Army Trail store is less than a mile from mine, and Bloomingdale, like, North Avenue store is less than a mile from mine. And the other residents were saying, my kids go to Glenbard West. So the question here is that every time we go Dunkin' Donut, and now you're gonna open a store next to Dunkin' Donut. What message we are giving to our kids? So the accessibility of this marijuana or cannabis are in hands of our kids. When they go, oh, dad, I'm going to get, grab coffee from Dunkin' Donut.
Sir, not, not to interrupt you, but it's kind of what I explained before. It's not whether or not you agree with cannabis or not. It's, the agenda item is whether a conditional use should be granted to the location at Army Trail in Bloomingdale or on North Avenue. So if you have comments regarding whether they make the standards or not.
I would recommend the board member to vote the same as you have done last time. Because this is our community. We don't want any of this store here. Our vote, the residents of Glendale Heights saying no, I recommend to all the board members, mayor, that not to grant this again. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, this is Rabani, and I live right across the street, sixteen seventy seven Scott Street. I moved to Glendale Heights in twenty nineteen because of the neighborhood, because of the community. And, you know, I just came to know like two weeks ago that, you know, you guys having this meeting regarding the drugstore, whatever it is called. But, you know, honestly, I'm in the middle. Actually, you know, I'm in the middle of Bloomingdale and Army Trail and North Avenue and Army Trail, Bloomingdale. So I honestly, you know, say a big no for the both locations because, you know, I got two daughters, and we both, you know, my, me and my wife, will take them to Dunkin', sometimes to Aldi. So even, you know, sometimes I walk to Domino's to get the pizza as well. So it's a big no from me, so it's up to you guys, but it's a big no.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Tosif Shamim, President Street, Glendale Heights. I strongly oppose both of these locations as far as, because they're recreational cannabis stores. I strongly oppose both of these locations, uh, for, as far as, because they're recreational, uh, cannabis stores. Uh, if it's medical, I, I, I think I'm okay with that. I have no problem with that at all. I think long term, just my view as a resident is that I don't think it's be, it's going to be beneficial for the community as a whole.
Sir, I, I, I don't mean to be rude, I really don't, but because it's already nine o'clock. Your comments regarding your feelings of cannabis are not appropriate at this meeting because that's not on the agenda. It's whether you believe either location does not meet their criteria, if there's an issue with meeting the standards for the, for the conditional use of a cannabis dispensary that's already allowed in the whole of Glendale Heights. So if you could just keep your comments to that, that's okay. It's just your feelings regarding the use of cannabis is not appropriate for this particular meeting.
Right. Uh, for me, I, I'm just opposed to both the locations. I think that, uh, what I would suggest, and I think another, somebody else also suggested this, I think since there's a lot of, uh, this divide here in the, among the residents of Glendale Heights, maybe I think, uh, we could do it in a verbal ballot quotation.
Again, if, if, if I can address that.
Yeah.
Cannabis is allowed in Glendale Heights, one on North Avenue and one on Army Trail Road. Whether that issue, that, that's an issue to decide whether or not you should allow cannabis. That ship has already sailed. It's already been approved by the village board. Um, and earlier in the year, I think it was in twenty twenty-two, George, is that correct? So that, you're asking for something to be done that's already been done. The referendum is, is already after the fact. It's been passed. So again, if we can keep your comments to whether or not these locations meet the, the criteria for conditional use. That's what we're here for today.
Yeah, I think, you know, like a lot of people mentioned, I think there's concerns about the, the traffic. And so that, that is a concern that I have as well too. But at, at the end of the day, I oppose both of the locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi. Uh, my name is Saad. I'm a resident of, uh, Glendale Heights, um, on Sherwood, near to Sherwood. Um, I think, uh, for both the locations, like in the morning when we are leaving, like in order to drop off the kids or for work or anything like that, like these are the two, like, uh, whenever I'm leaving, I'm leaving on Bloomingdale, either going right and going from North Avenue to three fifty-five or going left on Army Trail to three fifty-five. Either way, if, like, you know, the traffic is going to be an issue and that's of course, um, going to be an issue. And I know this not, uh, we are not talking about is it good to have cannabis or not, but like, you know, I'm concerned. I don't want my kids to be drug addicts. So I don't want them to have, like, you know, very open that they can, like, once they are a little bit older, not just my kids. And when I'm saying our kids as a community. Um, but whatever is on the agenda is, I think that if these locations are fine. So as far as these, both the locations are concerned, I think we already have too much traffic in the morning. North Avenue is a mess. It's like trucks, just like lines and lines of trucks. On top of that, if you add more cars and more people going in and out, and of course, a lot of them who are already driving high. That's, I understand that's like, you know, the cops are gonna give them tickets. But a lot of people who are, who are buying and leaving and smoking and they are like, they are not in the right frame of mind in that kind of traffic, that's going to make it even a bigger issue. Same thing with Army Trail. We just, um, we just built a new warehouse or something over here, um, on Army Trail as well. That has already increased the traffic on the trucks and everything. So on top of that, if the people are driving who are already under influence, then that's going to make it even more miserable on top of which, which is of course not part of the agenda that, um, you know, that's bad for, um, the kids or young adults who are growing in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, guys. Thank you for your patience. Um, I live on the seventh and Burdette Avenue, uh, in Glendale Heights by the water tower. Um, just a concern about the traffic pretty much.
Your name, please?
I'm sorry?
Name?
Roman.
Roman.
Um, I've been a resident for twelve years. Um, just a concern about the traffic. They just built a new warehouse. It has not been leased. You're gonna have trucks semi pretty much on the intersection by, on the North Avenue. So literally you're gonna choke that intersection. Besides, it's already been packed, like every morning. So, uh, if you really want the place or if they are allowed to have a place, just get it from eyesight, like in Edison, somewhere in, uh, by the warehouses, like, so, um, that way we're gonna have an alternative. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
All right, mayor, since there's no one else in line, we can consider public comment closed, unless you have someone online.
Uh, so I have a, uh, email from Mr. Sophia Uden. It's long. I'm only gonna actually relate the part that actually pertains to the agenda item. Which is really one sentence. But he, he would, uh, dispensary is not, personally, I would love to see a high-end coffee shop in the building on North Avenue. The only coffee available for miles is Dunkin Donuts. His only for this is C two community. Let's establish a community-friendly business, not one that will bring the community down. So. There's five paragraphs. That's about the only part that it pertains.
Is there anybody online?
Yeah, I have, uh, Saad who would like to speak. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Saad and, uh, I live in, um, unincorporated Glen Allen. And, and I think you can appreciate the fact, even though I'm not a Glendale Heights resident, um, I'm just a few hundred feet away from, um, uh, the proposed, uh, dispensary that's gonna, the Holy Vanna dispensary off of North Avenue. Um, so my, um, my comment is, uh, just what I might have mentioned last time. Um, uh, the traffic concern, I know there's been a lot of, that's already been addressed, but, um, um, more around the security, uh, concern because, um, the Holy Vanna dispensary would be backing directly to homes. It's, it's actually, um, directly adjacent to residential properties. And, um, you know, there's a concern because there's armed security, right? And, um, there, there's armed security because it's an anticipation of potential, um, you know, incidents that may happen. And, uh, you know, for this reason, uh, a lot, myself and a lot of the neighbor, uh, neighbors, they, uh, they're concerned that, that having that security presence, um, and a security operation for the, the entire time that the, that the dispensary would be open is a cause of concern. And, and, you know, we have a, just as much as their dispensary might have a right to exist, you know, and, and, you know, run as a business, we also as residents have a right to live without uh, fear of any security incidents. And that's my comment. Thank you.
I have one more, uh, Sajad. Give me one sec.
Yeah, hi there. Thank, thank you for having us. My name is, uh, Dr. Sajid. I just live like few feet away from, uh, the dispensary inside the Glen Rice Division. My son is, uh, eleven year old and along with other kids, they just play like around forty to fifty feet away from there on that same Glen Rice Avenue. Uh, apart from traffic, I think there will be a lot of inside traffic coming from behind Glen Allen also if the dispensary opens up. It's going, it's going to be very dangerous for eleven-year-old and ten-year-olds playing on the street there, going through all this traffic. Uh, that would come and buy this, 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 uh, this marijuana. That being said, I'm being a physician. I exactly know what marijuana does to, to, to the people too. Uh, and then God forbid if any kid gets involved, may not be directly, but indirectly too, who knows?
All right, doctor, I don't, I don't mean to be rude. I really don't, but i- unless it pertains to the conditional use itself, we're not going to consider any comments regarding the, the use of cannabis.
Use of it. So, yeah, so, but my main thing is our kids play few feet, few, few feet away from there and it's not safe. And we, we strongly oppose that. And we appreciate you, you, you considering that, I would say.
Thank you, doctor. That's it.
We can deem public comment closed.
Yeah, public comments closed, you know. Okay, uh, you have the consent agenda before you. What do you, acting village administrator Doug Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, one, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of November third, twenty twenty-two. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes of November third, twenty twenty-two. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing in November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Four, resolution designating freedom of information officers in the village of Glendale Heights. Five, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a GIS consortium service provider contract. Six, resolution to conduct a feasibility study for the consolidation of school districts with Queen B School District sixteen and Mark R School District fifteen. Seven, a resolution for the amendment of the vantage care retirement health, health savings system program in the village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. Eight, a resolution to authorize the allocation of MFT funds to the twenty twenty-three residential road improvement program. Nine, a resolution to approve an application for an outdoor pyrotechnic display permit for the village of Glendale Heights. Ten, resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes. Eleven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award or purchase order for the purchase of replacement cassettes in the super disc filters at the wastewater treatment plant. Twelve, a motion to approve pay request number two to Johnson Paving Company for the twenty twenty-two street program in the total amount not to exceed eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Thirteen is approval of consent items.
I need motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, Pat.
So moved.
Uh, second. Schmidt, second. Uh, discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Full business. There is none. New business. Number one, workers' compensation. We have Lee Kozad here who will do the presentation for the board. Lee, please.
Good evening, uh, mayor.
Did I pronounce you in a right way, you know?
Pardon me?
Did I pronounce your name right?
Leah.
Leah, okay.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Mayor, trustees, I'm here this evening just to, uh, present to you the excess workers' compensation renewal. Historically, this has been on a one-one, January one renewal date. Last year, we presented to you the, uh, option of Illinois County's Risk Management Trust. It is a program on a common renewal date of December first. So that's why I'm here in front of you this evening a little earlier than you're accustomed to. Uh, in part, the reason we had moved the excess workers' compensation from the prior carrier, Safety National, is they had increased their minimum premium to an amount that was, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared to a previous premium. So tonight I have, am presenting the excess workers' compensation in the amount of a hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Uh, this is an increase from expiring. It is unfortunately driven by the loss history experienced here at Glendale Heights. Um, but it's still a, a viable option. Illinois County Risk Management Trust handles all of your claims now. And prior to that, they were handled by an independent TPA. So between the moving from Safety National, uh, because of the minimum premium, you also lowered the retention. So once again, the excess workers' compensation is renewing at your recommendation at a hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Did you have any questions?
Leah, could you explain to them what the retention is and what it was, what it was and what it was reduced to?
Oh, pardon me, of course. So under Safety National's insurance program, for each and every claim, the self-insured retention, which in other words, the village has to pay for was six hundred thousand dollars. Um, and now under the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, the self-insured retention is three hundred thousand. So it cut in half per claim, the exposure that the village was taking on.
And just to remind the board, we've had two significant employee, um, inju- injuries this year, and that's the cause of the increase in our premium. So as injuries reduce, hopefully next year, premium should go down along with that.
Any question? Yes.
So, uh, in other words, it was six hundred thousand dollars and we cut it down to three hundred, three hundred thousand?
It's a retention. So if a claim occurs that exceeds six hundred thousand, that's when the carrier comes in. Um, so it's not like a direct savings. It's just how much the village takes on. A majority of your claims are well under, had been well under that six hundred thousand dollar mark. Um, even at the renewal, a majority of your claims are still under the three hundred thousand dollar self-insured retention. It's just, this is the level of risk that is willing to take on.
We did reduce our risk by, by that three hundred thousand dollars though.
It'd be equivalent to a deductible, correct?
Right.
Correct.
So your deductible is three hundred instead of six hundred?
Okay, okay, okay. I got it.
Sorry, insurance terminology.
Okay, I, I picked that up now.
Got it. Great. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Actually, we have no control over this, correct? It's just depending on the amount of injuries and the cost per injury.
Well, the, the control you have, and I think your village administration is doing an excellent job, is to minimize those risks of an injury occurring and then working, uh, with the claims adjusters to make sure that the medical attention is being, is happening quickly.
Basically what I asked, right?
Well, you do have some control, but no, for the most part, it, it is a little bit out of your hands in that, in that sense.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so can you define this service fee? I'm a little bit confused on that, like November first to October thirty-first. Is this forty-five thousand?
It's part of the, uh, as Alliant Insurance Services, we broker the business rather than collecting commission, you pay us on a fee. So the fee is not only, it's presented at this time, um, because it's the closest renewal date for an insurance policy, but it is for all of your insurance coverage placement.
Alliant is our insurance broker. They have, they, they broker all of our insurance policies across the village. So all of our, not just workman's comp, but every other policy we have goes through Alliant Mesro. That fee is to pay them for the services of, uh, finding and bidding out all of our insurance.
So this is like a yearly fees?
Yes.
Correct. And I will be back in a couple of weeks for the property and liability renewal.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So the, we're, we're looking to get the board's, uh, guidance to move forward with our workman's comp carrier so we can renew the contract.
I'm okay with it.
I would like to, uh, motion to proceed. Uh, Trustee Smith.
Motion to proceed.
Uh, Trustee Pojak.
Second.
And Doug, you'll bring back the contract.
Discussion, discussion is done.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light? Mike, are you there?
Yes.
Is your vote yes?
Yes, I got it.
Thank you.
The motion to proceed has been approved. Second, a motion to waive first reading on new business item three to six. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items three to six? I'm motion, uh, Trustee Smith.
Uh, move, we waive first reading on new item, business items three through six.
Second, Trustee Pojak.
Second.
Uh, discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Mike Light, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items three dash six is approved. Number three, an ordinance to amend section three dash four, sorry, four dash three dash thirteen entitled number of licenses, licenses of chapter three entitled liquor control of title four entitled business and license registration of the village code, of the village of Glendale Heights, LNI. Convenient request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-eight. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-eight? Uh, Trustee Pat?
So moved.
Second. Uh, Trustee Smith? Second. Discussion. Uh, yes, Trustee Pojak.
Yeah, right now, you're talking about the seven elevens. Am I correct?
Convenient.
No, this is the convenience.
No, this is the convenience, or convenient.
Right now, they're selling beer and wine, correct?
Yes.
Now they want to go with the hard liquor?
Yes.
You give them a hand, now they want the foot. Uh, uh, if, if you give them that, then they're going to want cannabis too now, later on in the future, so. Um, I'm against it, to be honest with you. That's it.
Anybody else? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
No.
Trustee Light?
No.
No? Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
No.
Trustee Schroder?
No.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The vote is four to two. The nays have it.
The ordinance failed. The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-eight is disapproved. Number four, an ordinance granting a conditional use or use to permit outdoor storage of vehicle located at seven zero one Regency Drive in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. Uh, arrow mark refreshment from November third, twenty twenty-two, COW. Request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen-nine. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-nine? Uh, Trustee Pojek?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, Trustee Mary. Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Mer- Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-nine is approved. Number five, an ordinance approving amendment to the personal policy manual and the operations policy manual of, of the Village of Glendale Heights. Request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy? Uh, Trustee Smith?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Pojek, second. Discussion? Any discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy is approved. Number six, an ordinance to waive bid and accept the proposal of Creek Site Operating LLC, DBA, Polaris for printing services for the twenty twenty-three Glend- Glendale Heights Community Newsletter, uh, Oblique Calendar and Senior Guide for authorizing the execution of a contract by and between Creek Site Operating LLC, DBA, Polaris, and the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from November third, twenty twenty-two, COW. Request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy-one. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy-one?
So moved.
Uh, Trustee Siddiqui? Second? Uh, Trustee Mary. Discussion?
Second.
None. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pojek.
Yeah, Darcy, did we get, uh, this is for one year only, correct? Everything's okay with the prices?
Yep, it's on the sixty-pound paper, and it will be, sorry. It's on the sixty-pound paper that we discussed at the meeting last week.
Okay, very good, all right, thank you, Darcy.
Anybody else? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy-one is approved. Seven, an ordinance to deny a consolidated, conditional use to permit an adult-use cannabis dispensary establishment for word of weed, DBA, IV hall located at twenty-one thirty Bloomingdale Road, unit B, in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from November third, twenty twenty-two, COW. First reading. Number eight, an ordinance to deny a conditional use to permit an adult-use cannabis dispensary establishment for purifier LLC, DBA, Holy Vena located at seven thirty-nine East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from November third, twenty twenty-two, COW. First reading. Number eight?
Number nine.
Sorry, number nine, an ordinance providing for the levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-two, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, first reading. Number ten, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of the taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-third, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Services Area Number One, Glendale Lake Business Park, first reading. Number eleven, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-third, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Two, Glendale Industrial Park, first reading. Number twelve, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-third, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Services Area Number Three, uh, Hefgro East Industrial Park, first reading. Thirteen, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April thir- thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Four, Highgroo West Industrial Park, first reading. Number fourteen, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-third, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Five, Glen Point Business Park, first reading. Number fifteen, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Six, Polo Club Heights Industrial Park, first reading. Number sixteen, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Seven, Saco Industrial Park, first reading. Seventeen, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-second, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Eight, Glendale Heights Business Park, first reading. Number eighteen, an ordinance for the, of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, partial abatement of the twenty twenty-two tax levy for twenty twenty-four, how do you say? Twenty-four million, two hundred and ten thousand. Dollar general obligation bond service twenty nineteen, first reading. Thank you, Mr. Flint. H, public discussion of agenda items. We now go to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda item only? None? Executive session, there is none. I need motion to adjourn. Uh, Trustee Smith?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, Trustee, uh, Pat, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Siddiqui, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. To order with the clerk, please note who is present.
Noted.
Thank you. Does anyone has any additions or deletions? Any additions or deletions? Nope, okay. Public comment, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Sure.
At Pope Wayne Avenue, I just, Mr. Epstein had to leave, and he slipped me a note, he asked me to ask this. He just wants to know, um, on discussion regarding number four, will there be any residents on that committee? Or is it just made up of village employees and village board members?
Nothing's been decided on the committee yet, then.
Okay, I just, he just asked me to ask this, I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, committee recommendations. Plan Commission, a recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use to allow an automobile detail establishment in C-two Community Commercial District for Umbra Window Tinting located at twenty twenty-one Bloomingdale Road. Is there a motion to approve an application for conditional use to allow automobile detail establishment? Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Move that we move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Thank you. All right, so it's a recommendation to approve the application for conditional use has been moved for the board to, uh, consider it, correct?
If you have any discussion in the?
Oh, discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? No, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Okay, so, recommendation to move it to the board has been approved. Village of Glendale Heights, four, five, seven plan analysis and recommendation. Jolene Christine will be presenting the, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jolene Christine, I'm an independent consultant working with governmental retirement plans. And I, first of all, want to thank Doug and Bill for recognizing that the plans the village offers needed to be looked at. Um, all of you are the fiduciary to the plan. The village sponsors these plans for employees to save. The four fifty-seven is a voluntary deferred compensation plan. Employees can choose to save money out of each paycheck and, uh, save for retirement. So you do not have any cost in this plan. You sponsor it, but you don't have any fees, you don't put any money into it. You provide it for your employees, it's one of their benefits. And, and this is, this is about improving that for the employees. I conducted a review of the current plans. You, you're currently sponsoring three different plans. You have a four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan with Nationwide, a four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan with Mission Square, and then there's also a retiree health savings plan with Mission Square. First of all, the way the plans work is they're priced by total assets. So by consolidating the assets, you can lower the cost substantially for the employees. The employees pay all of the fees out of their retirement accounts. There's fees from administration of the plan, that would be from the company that's doing the record-keeping, providing the statements. And then there's fees on each of the investments. The employees choose how they want to invest their money. Each one of those investments has an expense ratio. So the fees are being paid directly by the employees, not at all by the village. And it's, um, charged to everyone in the plan, whether they're currently contributing or not. All of the assets in all of these plans, uh, are charged fees. So it's important for you as a fiduciary to the plan to know that you're providing a competitively priced plan to your employees. So I conducted a review and, uh, benchmarked the fees against what other plans of this size and type are paying, and found that the fees that currently exist are, would not be considered reasonable anymore. I'm sure they were many years ago when these plans were started, but the assets have grown, and as the assets grow, you deserve lower fees. Uh, I then, um, did a comprehensive search amongst about a dozen providers that work with governmental plans that could provide these services to you, and, uh, compared them and negotiated with them until we identified what would be the best fit for the village. Um, I shared these results with the village, and then Doug formed a committee that included union members, which is really a best practice to include, uh, people from each of the unions so that we're getting a consensus of what the employees want. Um, they unanimously agreed that these three plans should be consolidated, which would dramatically bring the fees down for the employees. We're able to save the employees about a full percent, which is a substantial amount of money over the many years that the money's invested in these plans. Uh, we could also improve them by adding a Roth option so that employees would have the choice of using pre-tax money or after-tax Roth money. That's something they don't have now. Um, it's a, it's a very common procedure. I've worked with many, many villages and cities and counties that have gone through this to consolidate plans, making it better for the employees and also reducing liability that the village has. Um, it's, it's, um, takes about three months roughly, and then the assets from the employee accounts are mapped over to the new plan, which would include much lower-cost investments because currently, the investments that are offered in the plans are proprietary investments from the firms that are offering the plans. They're very high costs, so not only the administration fees are what we wouldn't consider reasonable anymore, but also the investment costs are very high. We can bring both of those down, saving about a percent for the employees. The, um, funds that I typically use are very low-cost, high-performing funds. Many of them come from Vanguard, which is a, a fund family that employees are familiar with. We want to make it simpler. Right now, they have about fifty investments in one plan. I believe the second plan has forty investments, and the next one has about thirty-five. It's very confusing to the average American who isn't well-versed in investments to try to figure out which plan to be in and which investments to be involved with. Um, when we simplify, make it easier for the employees, they, it typically increases participation, which is what we want. We want the employees to be appreciating this benefit that you're offering to them. And we can also simplify it for the administration at the village. A lot of the, uh, administration duties can be taken off the plate of the village and done by the provider. And by consolidating, you have more assets, you're more important to the provider, so you're going to get much better service. By the, the way that it's operating now, cut up into three pieces, makes it more work, more confusing, and more expensive. Consolidating it has, has many advantages. Um, I think, um, we've already got a unanimous vote from the committee that I think, um, we've already got a unanimous vote from the committee that was formed with the unions. We, uh, I did a comprehensive search amongst all the possible providers that could handle all of these plans, looking at their, their services, their cost, um, their ability to use what we call open architecture, so we're not, uh, restricted to only using their investments. We can instead use low-cost, high-performing investments for the employees. And, uh, Voya Financial was chosen as the best fit. You might be familiar with them from their commercials with orange money. They're a very large provider. They work with a lot of governmental plans and they have worked with many of the retiree health savings plans, moving them from Mission Square. So it will be a very seamless process. I sign on as a co-fiduciary, taking the responsibility of monitoring fees and investments on an ongoing basis, taking that off of your plate. And I work with the provider through the entire conversion process. It will be seamless and it doesn't interrupt the employee contributions. And all of the employee money stays invested until the night that it's wired to the new provider and then is available to them in their new accounts. Voya would be here to help them enroll and understand the new plan, and then they're free to move their money around.
So we'd be looking for guidance from the board tonight to, uh, give us direction to move forward with Jolene, to enter into an agreement, to start the process of, uh, getting our plans consolidated into one, uh, under one umbrella with Voya. Uh, this will, you know, greatly reduce costs for everybody in the plans. Hopefully, we'll get more people to invest and we'll use the cumulative money from three plans into one and, uh, further reduce costs. But tonight, we're looking to get your guidance to let us move forward with Jolene, to enter an agreement, so we can bring back a contract for the board to, uh, look at.
Go ahead, Mr. Pat.
So, they take the money out of the check and, and it's going into three different funds now?
Oh, so the way it's currently set up, we have our choice of two investment companies to invest our retirement plan with. We either invest with Nationwide or we invest with, um...
Mission Square.
Mission Square.
Do we have to make a motion first before we go into discussion?
Well, he's just giving a background. It's only, it's only a discussion item. Yeah. It's not, it's not for...
All right, I'm just curious. Usually, we go into discussion first.
So, the employees today have their choice of two different vendors to, uh, work with for their retirement plan. The retirement health savings plan that the village provides is through Mission Square. So there's three, uh, different plan, two different, one plan, forty-seven, two different companies. Retirement health savings is also Mission Square. We're looking to consolidate all that into one, so we can pool all of our money together under Voya to reduce our costs and reduce our fees, get away from the proprietary, proprietary funds that Nationwide and Central Square have and go to a more open architecture funds and have a better service, better quality, better product for all of our employees and reduce our fees.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Mr. Pochek.
Is there a money savings in this approximately?
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's one pers, roughly on paper, uh, looking at all the funds that are available to us and the investments, uh, the average, uh, investor, average employee will save about one percent a year per investment.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, every hundred thousand's a thousand. So, I mean, it adds up pretty quick over the course of thirty years of investing.
I think it works out to about a hundred thousand dollars per year for the employees in savings.
Okay.
Now, you mentioned you, hopefully more employees will get involved in this?
Yes. Well, I mean, the goal is to make it simpler so more people understand it.
Okay.
That's typically what happens. I've worked with many cities and villages and many people won't, they don't understand it that well to begin with. And then when they have these decisions to make, which provider should I go with? I've got this whole long list of investments and this whole long list of investments. They tend to save it and think about it five, ten years later. And what's best for your employees is that they start saving for retirement at a young age and that it's simple for them and that they get a lot of help and education. With, with one provider, they'll get more help, so they'll understand it better and typically it'll be easier for them to get started.
Mr. Schmidt.
How many employees are we, uh, talking about currently enrolled in these type of programs?
Uh, I don't have that. Jolene's got it. Uh, we are, uh, kind of low, quite honestly. I mean, I think we're low. I'm, I'm shocked that not every employee takes five or ten percent of their paycheck and puts it into deferred comp plan. But we are, you have the number?
That's a good question. There are a hundred and fifty-six total participants in the plan. Now, some of those could be retirees or people that no longer work here but left their balance in the plans. Seventy-one employees are actively contributing.
Do we match?
No.
No? Okay, maybe that's the reason why there is not that many.
I think...
Well, four fifty-seven plans are designed only for voluntary employee money.
Okay.
It's not a place for employer money. You, you have no money in this game at all, no fees and no contributions. It's simply a, a plan that you sponsor to help your employees save for retirement.
Okay.
But you have a responsibility to give them a competitively priced plan with good investments.
Gotcha. Ms. Schroder.
Just one question. Does the employee have a decision on how much they want to invest or is it a set amount?
No, very good question. They can choose how much they'd like to contribute out of paychecks and they can change that whenever they'd like. They can, hopefully, they're going to increase it as they make more money and they can afford more, that if they're getting help, they're going to know that that's the best practice for them. Um, if they don't get the help, they're going to probably leave it too low and not have enough money when they retire, or they'll be trying to put a lot more money in as they get closer to retirement and catch up. But they can adjust it at any time and then if we improve it and add a Roth, they'll also be able to choose if they're better off to pay the tax now or get the tax spent break now and pay the tax when they take the money out in retirement with a pre-tax and a Roth option.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Pochek.
Yeah, Doug, I feel that the, the participation is so low is because of the cost of living. It's costing a lot of people to get groceries and gas and everything instead of...
But it always hasn't been that way, right?
But it's worse now.
But the last five years have been great. So, you know, it's the ups and downs of society we live in today. So, you know, the goal is to make it simpler, make the onboarding simpler, make, you know, have Jolene as a resource that people can reach out to, to contact and find out, you know, more about the, the plan. So it's, you know, we're in the plan now. Alls we're asking the board to do is give us permission to consolidate our plans from three plans into one plan and save fees.
Okay, so do you need a motion or you just need a verbal?
Just direction.
Just a direction?
Yeah, so we can come back with a contract.
Yeah, so go for it. I am fine with that. Any other board member has any objection?
No.
No? Okay. Yeah, so go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate all, everything you do.
Thank you. All right, Glendale Heights Fest, Mr. Keith.
Well, there is nothing better than in November, thirty degrees, talking about fests. So we're going to get into fest right now. The fest committee or the Founder's Day Committee met, uh, earlier this month and after our meeting after the twenty twenty-two fest, it was decided to bring back some ideas to discuss as a committee and then bring them to you so that we can actually start our planning for the twenty twenty-three fest. There are three items that are in the memo that I wrote to you that, um, or that Paula wrote to you, excuse me, that, um, are up for discussion, but we really need the direction because this will allow us to move forward in our planning. So the first one is to reduce the number of days of the event from five to four. So we would be looking to take Glendale Heights Fest from a Wednesday through Sunday to just a Thursday through Sunday. And in the packet, I've included in there some of the, um, the reasons for that, but obviously there's some cost savings. But, um, we feel that a four-day fest, people will still come to our fest. We think that the money won't change any, but I think that the savings and the savings on the staff is of great value. Um, the second item that's there is permanently changing the carnival and entertainment hours. As you know, last year, we kind of went five to nine during the weekdays and then we expanded it out a little bit longer on the weekends. I put in there that, um, the hours that were discussed in the meeting were fi, instead of five to nine, we would add an hour on the early side, so go from four to nine. There was discussion, um, regarding possibly going to nine-thirty or ten. I'll give the chief his two seconds here to give his thoughts on that. Go ahead.
Nobody from the police department was at this meeting and after I got the memo, we vehemently said, no. Nine o'clock was a great family event last year and again, nine, we had no issues. So our recommendation at the police department was nine. That was it.
And then, the final item is to permanently change fireworks at Glendale Heights Fest to just a one-night event on Sunday. Um, I think everybody, I think we talked about it the last, last year when we were doing fireworks, that we were estimating a thirty to forty percent increase in firework costs. That's what they passed on to us. We have not met with them because I want to have direction before I do that. But this will allow us to put all of the money in one show instead of splitting it up into two and make sure that the residents get the show that they're used to. So what we're really looking for today is some, uh, is either approval for this so that we can get out, speak with the carnival, start setting up our entertainment schedule and get everything ready for the vendors, because quite honestly, we start that right after the first of the year.
So does anyone have, oh, Mr. Merrittato?
Can I ask?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
One question. You want to reduce it from five nights to four nights. Well, now you also reduce the cost of the, um, the people that, that have the, um, help me.
The tickets?
No, no, the people that have the boots.
Oh.
I mean, their cost is going to be reduced tremendously.
That'll be something that what we'll discuss as a committee as to whether or not to do that. One of the recommendations was to increase the cost, um, before we went down. So the likelihood is that we would be looking at either keeping the cost the same or reducing it based on the number of days.
Because you're going from five to four nights and they're not going to be making quite as much.
They've actually said that, quite honestly, from their standpoint, they're okay with going down that additional night because they feel that, um, they have the same savings that we have with costs and stuff. Their big days are Sunday and they're, well, they're the fireworks days. So Sunday or Saturday on the weekends.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pochek.
Keith, the only question, uh, question, complaint I had was that fireworks vendor was horrible this year. And I think you agreed on, on that too. What are you going to do about that?
I don't know that I completely agreed, but I think what we ta, talked about is that the pacing was an issue. I think we heard that from a number of people.
Oh, yeah.
One of the things that we'll go back to the company, um, with, and we do think that they did a show that was, we had a lot of compliments for the different types of fireworks. So it was kind of the mix, we, it was kind of a fifty-fifty mix on what we heard. I think what we'd like to do is go back to the fireworks company and kind of talk about pacing and picking up the pace so that the show, I think we ended up at a twenty-six or twenty-seven minute show. The conversation was originally twenty-four minutes is what we talked about. I think if you took out those two and a half minutes, that show would have been fantastic.
We'll give you another chance.
Mr. Merrittato.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. I think the vendors would be happy because they're, they're only interested in Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I mean, that's where they make all the money. And Thursday usually is a, a dead night, so I, I think it'd be okay. But like I said, with the fireworks, you got to get a price on it and see where, see where they're coming from.
Darcy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have one, we have a renewal option, so we'll go back to them, get that information. And all this, we'll still have to, you know, the fireworks will have to come back to the board. You'll still see the normal stuff, it's just a matter of getting planning started.
Okay, Mr. you? Mr. Schmidt.
Uh, given the unpredictability of summer weather at that time, uh, I want to say every year we lose one day and that would be a, a twenty percent decrease. If you cut that down by a day, now you're going to lose twenty-five percent. How is that going to affect our income?
Until we do this, I can't answer that fully, but the belief is by adding the hours that we add on the other days, we've really set up this fest to have the same number of hours as they had last year. So even if we lose that day, last year, we actually lost Friday, um, not completely, but number-wise, we lost Friday. And so we feel that this is still something that, um, we can handle from a financial standpoint.
Okay. Any other question?
Looking at memo, the, the, the cost per day of security is about twenty-five thousand dollars. And, you know, we, the security fee is still going to be there regardless of rain, but the cop, the police officer fee, which is a little bit bigger than the security fee, um, would go away, right? So I mean, we, we would reduce not all of our expenses, but, uh, a big majority of our expenses from the employee cost of that. Reducing that Wednesday day saves, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars of village cost just in security.
Okay, so what we are looking, are you looking just a verbal or verbal?
Well, I, I think what also hasn't been addressed is some guidance on the hours or you wanted to defer for a little while and think about the hours. But, you know, it's been recommended, uh, nine o'clock worked really, really well. Moving the hour back from five to four, uh, gives them, you know, gives families five hours to be there and we can still close at nine PM and, you know, right at sunset for that timeframe, more or less. And, you know, have light and have people out on their way from the carnival.
And then we also added an hour early on the weekend, so we're starting at, we recommend starting at two o'clock.
Okay.
That was my next question. You didn't mention Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah, we recommend the two to nine. Last year, it was three to nine. So as I said, we actually took the four hours from Wednesday and we added those hours at the front end so that basically the carnival still has the same number of hours, they just don't have the same number of days.
Yeah, Trustee Schmidt brought up a good question about the weather. You never know. You can lose no days or one day or two days. All right.
Did you want to give them direction to proceed or did you want to reconsider it?
Yeah.
So from the standpoint of the Founder's Day Committee, the sooner we have answers on whatever we can get those answers on, but we kind of need to set the, whether it's five days or four days, because then I can contact the carnival, which it's within our contract to do so. And then the hours and stuff, just so we can start notifying people. If you don't make the decision today, I would just ask that we put it on the agenda for next time if you want to think about it, but we definitely need to have that answer at that December meeting.
Okay. I mean...
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm all for the, um, four to nine and four days. I have no problem with it.
Same here. Mr. Schmidt. Yes, so we all agree to go for it.
Good with the fireworks and the... We're good?
One day a week, one night.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, number three, cricket presentation by acting village administrator Doug Flynn. Uh, Mr. Flynn, before even you go over there, uh, is this the same presentation which you gave last time to the board?
Yes, uh, there is, the only addition to the presentation from last year is the addition of the revenues of cricket this year, which is twenty-eight thousand dollars for the fee and two thousand dollars for maintenance.
Okay, and we all know, already know that. So do the board members want to hear again that presentation? I mean, I don't want to hear that again. Uh, Mr. Pat?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, i- if it's the same presentation we did last year, I mean, why are we doing it again? I mean, I, I mean, I, I don't need to...
It's seven slides, but...
Yeah, no, I mean, we already laid. I don't want to hear the same thing again. Any other board member want to hear?
Uh, do you have any additional stuff?
No. Okay, um, I think...
No, it's the same presentation.
Yeah. So we don't, really don't need that. Number three, cricket presentation by acting village administrator, oh, sorry. Formulation of committee to initiate and evaluate an RFP for cricket. Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to postpone that to our next committee of the whole meeting, uh, give us a chance to think about things a little bit more.
Okay, I agree. Any?
I agree.
I agree, okay. All right, so we will move it to the next board meeting. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion. First.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pocheck.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Ten o'clock.
Yes, yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, he made it by, he made it by an hour.